The agenda looks short, but I think it's sweet. Hello, music. Hi, Dell.
Good evening. Wow, it looks like somebody ate in this chair.
Oh, no. Who sits there the night before, huh? Who was there last night? Let's see. Tom Hawkins is in this seat.
I don't need any help being messy.
Well, they found it. Thank you, Troy.
Just something Judy gave us.
Oh, okay. Don't you think?
What's that? How you doing, buddy? Good? Got a couple of treats. There we go. First of all, when we do the Monsanto grant, when the people are from Monsanto, we should have a motion to approve the grant. It's a grant. It's a grant. So we have to do a roll call. I think so. No? This is the motion. To accept the grant.
Just donations we accepted on?
I think you're right. Should we do a motion to accept the... Sue thought we should do a motion to accept the grant.
Yeah.
If Dan's not here, so...
It's just...
Yep, that's one of the two. And then down here, we're going to table this. Pretty sure we have somebody who wants to do it, but he's not 100% sure. Well, four people are interested. But one more thing. This is September 12. Hey, Julie. Did Sue change that date for you? September 12? Okay. That's it.
Okay, so that's the only... So these are the two changes then?
That is correct.
This is interesting. Yes, or compared to state.
RC years last year compared to the state.
And compared to previous years in our own district.
Oh, yes. Last five years.
Are we ready in about 30 seconds?
We can be.
How many seconds?
Thirty. Want a nitro pill to calm down? I'll stress, here. I haven't heard. So who wants to make the motion to accept the grant tonight?
Good evening, and welcome to this evening's meeting of the Fairmont School Board. It is Tuesday, September 12, 2017, 5:00 p.m., and we are all present.
Yes, we are.
So please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Minutes from last meeting?
I move to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Tallis in favor?
Aye.
And the agenda. Two changes. Under Financial Business, B, the date of October, or August 22nd should be changed to September 12. And then under New Business, National Honor Society, that will be tabled until next meeting. So entertain a motion to accept with those changes.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with those changes.
Second.
Tallis in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. Celebrations. We have a... Two gentlemen here from Monsanto to present some good news. Daniel Lemon and Paul Iverson. Welcome.
Well, thank you very much. As you said, my name is Dan Lemon, and I brought Paul Iverson with me. We represent Monsanto in southern Minnesota. And we're here today because we're very happy to say that with a lot of effort from your local farmers and people from your school board who, you know, did everything it took to write the grant, successfully secured a $10,000 grant this year. Monsanto has been doing this now since 2011. We've given out about nine million, and this year it'll be about 2.3. In the rural sector, the corn belt, we feel that it's super important that, you know, we have good opportunities for the youth that'll be, you know, needing to feed the world. So we appreciate all your work and effort and the farmers who nominated you, and we're very happy to present you with the $10,000 grant.
Well, thank you. And Bob O'Neil?
So what we'd like to do is, you know, get a few of the people in. I mean, it's all about a good picture, right? So we could get a bunch of people, and if we could get one on this iPad and then maybe... Who else should we all be putting in the picture? We should have a... Do we have anybody here like from the egg community that helped nominate or anything? And where do we want to have a backdrop at? You want us right up here, Judy?
Yeah, Judy would be a... That'll be a good place for it.
We all crowd in?
You want us to wear the Monsanto... You want us to wear the Monsanto hats?
Um, well, we, if you want to. I mean, if you... I mean, they... We felt a brown hat with people in shirt ties would look good, so...
You thought I was kidding?
I'd put a hat right up here for the rest of the meeting. Yes, sir. I'm a hat guy.
Thank you.
Just for the picture.
We just don't get that in my business.
Why don't you talk a little bit about your welding program and then show your... Show your virtual welders.
Sounds good. Thank you, congratulations. Well, thank you to Monsanto representatives and stuff. I was visiting with... They're both local guys. Amboy and over by Wyndham, he said. So I was visiting with a guy from Amboy. He actually knew one of our students from Blue Earth that took the Saturday welding in our summer academy. And I was visiting with him that that student had actually built some cattle gates in our project portion of that class. So it's a... We were talking about the, you know, agriculture is really big in our area, especially the egg welding. When you talk... Go over to Jackson, and you got Egg Co., which is nothing more than agricultural manufacturing plant. Start coming back this way, and you end up at Waitronics, again agricultural manufacturing plant. Dip over the Iowa line there, and you've got GKN and Artsway, which are all tied right in, and now Zirki here in town. So we thank these guys very much for helping keep our manufacturing alive and well. So with their money, we were able to purchase some... I've got one here today. It's a virtual welding simulator. And so I had some students stop by today and kick the tires on it. And we had to call and make some tweaks to a laptop, which they were able to work with us real great. And then I brought it here, and this projector makes it look a little bit bigger. So I apologize. It looks a lot neater back home and then on the laptop itself. But we're going to do a demonstration of that. But to explain to you what we're going to do with this is we're going to start working down in our STEM 8 class. And so Mr. Johnson's going to be teaching the eighth graders Introduction to Mig Welding down in the eighth grade without that fear of any safety problems. Because it is virtual, we're not going to see any kids going home with burns in shoes or pants or flash burns to the eyes or any, you know, weld spatters or stuff. And the fear kind of goes away from it, too. Today, when I got onto it, and I've used it before, when I got onto it, the thing I compared to real quick was it's like a video game. And so, of course, our students are going to absolutely love that. But it's a great learning tool, which they're not going to understand that part of it until, you know, down the road a little bit. There's... The assessments that go with this software is just so powerful. And Virtual Reality Works, we already use their Real Care Babies. So we have their product in the district already. So we already know how powerful their, you know, their stuff is. And the nice thing with that is we can continue to track the kids. So we start them off at a beginner, novice, experienced, and professional, and we can just keep changing the factors to this. We can also add a stick gun to it, and we can add a TIG gun to it. So it's a machine that continues to build. The nice thing is, is we have absolutely zero consumables with it. We don't have to worry about gas. We don't have to worry about the wire. We don't have to worry about the material that we're going to weld on. So down the road, it's going to be a great savings to the district as well with our intro classes. So it's... It's going to be one of those things that we'll probably take around on our road show. You know, we'll probably see it at the Family Fun Fair. It's going to be a great thing to take to the county fair. Many of our type of expos or stuff, we could bring this along with our students. And I'm fortunate enough tonight to have Avery Vleger, who's working for the production, is actually one of our students. So he jumped on here just a little bit ago, and so we'll bring Avery out. He'll do a little demonstration for you as well. We have it set on a beginner mode tonight, but, you know, it's a great tool that we're going to use daily at the high school between the STEM 8 program and then my own program. I've got kids already begging. They know we got them over the summer, and it was sitting on my desk the first week of school, and they were, "When do we get on it?" So, you know, it's just a big thank you to you guys, and thank you to them. And it's a great asset to our district. Mr. Tredo was going to come up and show some of his skills, maybe. And Mr. Tredo has come down and done some welding with my students. And so it's a lot of fun. But I'm really excited about it. I don't know if you can tell, but... Any questions you guys have before we...
Bob, in addition to introducing the students to welding, will you incorporate that with, you know, the regular welding class?
Absolutely, because of the assessment tools that come with this. I can use this to... And I'm going to switch over to this other mic. Hopefully you guys can hear. With this... With welding, the angle of the gun is huge to the quality of the weld. Getting the gas to come out just right, getting the weld to come, you know, to get my wire to come out, to get it right in that joint. This is a T-joint. And so to get my gas to come into that, to protect that, to get my penetration in that, it's something that, up to this point, it's just, you know, through a visual inspection on the job, they do, you know, destructive-type tests with it, or they'll do an ultrasonic-type test to see if it's going well. With this, and you'll be able to see that through the software, it will record because of the sensors, gun angle, so I can tell if, you know, the right amount of penetration, the right amount of heat is going into the weld. We'll be able to tell if the gun is angled right with the nozzle. Is it getting the, you know, the shielding gas where it's supposed to be? Travel speed. And so what that's going to do is, it's just like with athletes. It's muscle memory. And once you kind of get that down, so when the kids do get it, especially the intro, when they get into it, they're going to be further ahead. So we'll see less startup problems. They won't be sticking their wire, burning through, stuff like that. With the older kids like Avery, when we start putting that to tougher levels, and we can go in and set that through the curriculum, I'm able to then see how fast they're traveling. Are they getting it in the right spot? And this allows us to move it to different angles, too. So they might be doing an overhead or a vertical weld versus just a straight horizontal, so...
So does that give automatic, real-time feedback?
Yes.
As they're actually welding?
Yes, and we'll show... And actually, I can... There's some... Throughout the day that we're kind of messing around with this... Avery, you want to come out? Put him on the spot. All right, so this is set up for a T-joint. And so he's going to go ahead. And just like safety with the shop, they encourage, you know, to have the gloves on and stuff so you get used to that gun in your gloved hand, because it does have a different feel. So how he'll begin is he'll tack the two edges, which you'll be able to see behind us, and that calibrates the gun.
Bob, you're a little bit in the way.
I'm sorry.
There you go.
I'm probably a lot of bit in the way.
Well, kind of.
A billboard. Okay, so he's now tacked it, and it... And of course, you can't see the full screen, but it'll tell him the direction of travel. And I can change that. And we can do a multi-pass. A lot of the manufacturing will do a multi-pass, which we don't have to get into all the welding terms, but... So Avery's going to go ahead and lay a bead across here, and you're going to be able to watch... Go ahead. As he's laying his bead, you can kind of see... It looks like what you'd be seeing through a welding mask with the weld puddle behind him. And you can see how thick or how thin the weld is. So basically, it's what the kids would see through their mask right now back in the weld shop. The plus... This is on the beginner. So the plus means he's doing okay. It would show a negative if he gets out of it too much. And then on the gun, too, there's a green, and that would turn red or yellow. So he's made his weld. One thing we discovered today is if you don't put this back in the holder, you get real dizzy fast because it tracks the gun. Because I had kids that were kind of talking with it, and it's like, holy cows. So because the software's kind of goofed up... Or the projector. I think this is a different projector than what we have at the school. So I'm going to slide this over. And hopefully, I might not be able to get down to it.
And Bob, in the meantime, Avery, what grade are you in now? And how many semesters of welding have you taken?
I have taken the...
This will be your third this year, yeah.
Third semester?
I keep track of my kids.
Okay.
I took the summer welding program.
You did?
Intro last year.
Okay.
And because of the settings are off on my computer a little bit, down here, where there is, there's a button that you'd click on, and that would take us to his feedback. And for some reason, I'm not... If you could hold on one second, I can... Just one second. I'm going to disconnect that, and then it gives me a small screen, and then I'll pop it back up. This is where I need that tech guru. If Lee or Mr. Stewart or Mr. Walker was here, it would be much different. Okay, so... It's all right. You were under pressure this time. You had an audience. Okay, now is it back on? All right, so this would be what his feedback would be, and it would tell him percentages of how he did. And then you'll see this, the yellow line, maybe you can't see very well there, but that graphs it and above or below center line. And so that would be instant feedback for me and the student, and then he'd be able to go right back to it. They would have to have five practices before they could take the real test. Once they take the test, it could be used as an assessment. For me, it would probably, you know, it would not be a summative assessment. It'd be just merely formative. Okay, what do you need to work on yet? It gives me a chance to conference with the student then to do that. And then with this, like I said, I'll give him a score. Can't get 100% because I have one of them turned off. And so the best you could get is an 80. So actually, he got 1% off, so he didn't do too bad. There's a video, so we can replay, so he can see away from doing the performance part of it, and then it tracks his history and things like that as well. So every student will have their own login. This software could be put on our server, and so then it would just need to have a virtual reality icon put onto specific teachers' desks, desktops. So like Mr. Tredo would like to do it in the Makerspace, we could put the software on one server and put icons in other desks to be able to use it. So it's a multi-user. We just need to have... Which right now, we currently have two. So the nice thing is, this could be... Thanks, Avery. This could be something that could go into a Makerspace for the, you know, kids to kind of test their, you know, themselves on it and say, hey, do I want to go into, you know, more? If they get exposure in the eighth grade, you know, every student that takes STEM gets exposure to it, we'd pretty much catch every kid before they would get into the Makerspace if I'm not talking wrong. Yep. And then they could, of course, take the class and go from there. So several of you have had, you know, your own children have taken the welding, so...
Incredible.
It is. And like I said, it's like a video game. The resolution is a lot better when we have it down in the right screen size and stuff, but I'm not an IT guy.
Well, thanks to Monsanto, once again.
Thank you.
Right, indeed.
Very good.
So can we get a motion to accept this wonderful grant?
Make a motion to approve the acceptance of the $10,000 grant from Monsanto to be used towards the welding, virtual welding.
Second.
Motion, a second.
The discussion being, thanks to Monsanto, I'm very confident that our area needs it and will use it to its best, our best ability.
All set. Any more discussion? Any questions? All this in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you again. Okay. Principal Niss and Tredo? Personalized Learning update?
All right, well, we would first like to begin by telling you how excited we are to share this journey with you. And because of that, I'm going to kind of keep to the script here because I could go on and on and probably get off topic here. So I know with time and stuff, I'm going to really kind of keep to the script here. But I would say that amongst staff, students, and parents, along with administration, we are feeling both excited and anxious about this journey we are embarking on. We are embracing those emotions, though, and we are focused on working together to continue to learn more about personalized learning and how it can benefit our students and their futures. So we first want to begin by actually defining what personalized learning is, because we've really been using those words a lot. So personalized learning, by definition, and I am using a resource called Institute for Personalized Learning with this definition. So the institute defines personalized learning as an approach to learning and instruction that is designed around individual learner readiness, strengths, needs, and interests. Learners are active participants in setting goals, planning their learning paths, tracking their progress, and determining how learning will be demonstrated. At any given time, learning objectives, content, methods, and pacing are likely to vary from learner to learner as they pursue proficiency relative to established standards. A fully personalized environment moves beyond differentiation and individualization. So Andy will expand on the focal points of personalized learning, but before he does that, we would like to define the why of this journey. And to me, there's really a lot of whys, but we've really kind of narrowed it down to these two big whys. And many of you have heard this first one from reading the book, "Thank You for Being Late." But our current society requires citizens who can adapt to rapidly changing environments, think creatively, and critically analyze problems. The world has changed and continues to change dramatically. As their learning ecosystems transform to prepare students... As our, I'm sorry, as our learning ecosystems transform to prepare students for their futures, we can't afford to prepare today's learners for yesterday's challenges or even today's. So that would be one of the main whys that we're embarking on this. And Andy's going to talk about the second one.
Yeah, so as we work with our students, and we really want them to develop the skills and attributes for them to be successful for what their futures look like, ultimately, our goal is for our students, by the time they finish their education at Fairmont High School, is to be able to leave our building no longer needing to depend on us and our system for their learning, that they've acquired the skills and the attributes to go out into their world and embark on their future, having the skills that they need to be successful. And so in order to accomplish this, it is important for us, we feel, to explore the implementation of a more personalized learning atmosphere to truly meet the needs of our learners and the world that they're embarking on. So as Kim mentioned, some of the focal points of personalized learning I'll go through here are really a lot of practices that our teachers already have in place. It's just redefining the focus of what they're doing. And one of them is that it shifts the roles of learners and educators to work collaboratively. As we think of teaching and learning, teaching is something that people really do to us and share knowledge with us. Where learning is something that happens within us. And so we really want that to become a collaborative process between our teachers and our students so that together, as we're embarking on this journey, that it's really a collaborative effort. It ensures purposeful learning. It supports individual learning goals and action plans. It varies the pace of learning while remaining focused on standards. We all know that learners in our system learn at different paces, so it can adapt and vary that for them. It focuses on broader concepts and deeper learning. It develops collaboration skills and strategies. And it uses technology as a support. Our learners today that we have in our school system are accustomed to having technology at their fingertips. That is the normal for them. And so we want to make sure that we're using that not as the sole driver in our learning, but as a support to that learning that's taking place. It affords learners greater ownership and influence over their learning. You'll hear later, too, as we talk about that ownership piece is vital to where we're going with what we're looking at here. It supports a variety of learning approaches. Many of our teachers, for years and years, have used a variety of approaches to address the different learner needs, so that's something that will remain consistent. It builds learner skills and capacity with supportive, important content, and it fosters learning independence. And that circles back to the previously mentioned statement. By the time that our kids are leaving our system, that we want them to be fully prepared with the skills that they need to be successful. So some of the things we'll get into now is what this really looks like for our students currently in our first, let's see, six days of school here that we're into. One of the things is during our Cardinal Academy time, which is a 20-plus-minute part of our school day towards the end. It's an extension of our seventh period where we will truly focus on students developing that ownership of their learning. Teachers will meet with each student once per week, where the students will report to the teacher on where they're at in their learning, identifying some successes and challenges, and next steps that they might need in their academic journey through our school system. and next steps that they might need in their academic journey through our school system. Um, all students in curd, in grades seven to through twelve have spent the initial days of this time developing one of the core components of personalized learning. Um, and that is a learner's profile that gives them, uh, a way to explore their learning needs, um, and document them so that they can also share those with their teachers so that the teachers have ideas of the different factors that are playing into the students' mindsets about their own learning. Um, and that, like I said, that's really a core component of, of that personalized learning journey. Uh, and then as we, you know, as we get into, you know, what the different types of learning modes and modalities look like within the classroom in our buildings, uh, one of the things that we've really done, um, as both Mrs. Niss and myself have done, you know, our reading and professional development with our teachers, is to develop a common vocabulary so that within our building, within our system, we're speaking a similar language. Um, for example, and, and Kim will give a couple of examples here, uh, coming up, but, um, when we speak of the term seminar, that's gonna be, um, direct instruction. So as our, our teachers offer, um, sessions for students at different times in their learning, um, we'll use the term seminar, which will be, um, defined as direct instruction to the students. Um, similar to what we would refer to as a lecture format. Um, the coaching workshop would be small group instruction where the, the instructor would be leading a small group of students and really coaching them through what their learning needs in that small group setting. Um, there are several others here, uh, which you have in, in your information that we've provided. A lab would be what we traditionally think of as a lab where learners collaborate or work individually to experiment, to solve a problem, to investigate. Um, one of the neat ones that, that I'm personally looking forward to seeing is learner-led workshops unfold in our learning experiences where the students really grab hold of concepts and ideas and take charge to lead learning, whether it's for themselves or small groups within their, their learning settings. Um, two of the ones that our students are having, um, some experience with right now in our upper grade levels are group flex and personal flex. So what a group flex space would be, would be identified flexible learning in a collaborative sense, where a personal flex would be that quiet workspace that our students will have the choice of, of using, um, and what they need and identifying what they need in their learning. So what that looks and feels like, um, will unfold here, you know, throughout the school year for different students as they really truly get to take ownership and personalize their learning experiences as much as possible. Um, and then Kim's gonna explain some of the structures that we have in place to support, um, the development moving forward.
Yeah, so Andy just spoke on the Cardinal Academy time and that time in terms of the students really, um, identifying their needs, um, leads right into our FAST structure. So you're familiar that we've had FAST for the last two years. Um, and normally we have run FAST every three, or every third week on Tuesdays, um, in the morning and some of our students were able to earn a FAST pass where they did not have to be there. So a change for this year is that we are gonna run FAST every Thursday from one thirty-nine to two forty-five and all students will participate in FAST this year. Um, and so we'll have all of our staff, and this includes our student support as well, so the counselors, the social worker, the SRO, all of them will create two thirty-minute sessions. And so for example, and kinda using the vocabulary that Andy just referred to. So let's say Mr. Haugen on a Thursday afternoon from one forty-five to two fifteen is going to run a seminar on completing the square. So what that communicates to kids is we all learn and understand this vocabulary is that if I need to hear that lecture again, that direct instruction, then I know that I could go to Mr. Haugen's room from one forty-five to two fifteen. Um, Mr. Seagard may run a coaching workshop, that's more small group, individualized, um, need, you know, need-based work, um, and I could choose that. So how students choose and how we have this set up is through our EPAS system, which became live and well yesterday. And our juniors and seniors, and we're gonna talk about kinda the EP, or the study hall structure, but they were able to use it. Um, for the, for the, um, students, it was very, very easy to sign up for where they're going to be. And then I was able to kinda use the management side of it to see that, yep, I see where you're all going, um, I know where you're at. If I needed to find a student, I could easily find where they're going to be at. And so kind of the, the whole idea of the FAST is that really our students would have an option of any of the classrooms if they needed additional help. Um, they would have access to some of the flexible spaces that I'm gonna talk about. Um, we're also working to partner with our elementary school to give students an opportunity to go to the elementary, to work and help our elementary students. Um, so one of the options there would be that, um, maybe our, we would have some peer tutors that could be partnered up with our sixth grade math teacher, Mr. Brackey, and those students could help tutor the sixth graders during that time. Um, so that would be kind of an off-site option for the students during FAST. Um, and then I also just sent, um, Miss, or Amy Long from Mayo and I are going to sit down and kinda see how we can maybe partner with Mayo for an opportunity as well. Um, just looking at our students just having to walk across the street. Um, for our off-site opportunities, we would offer that for the full hour. So students would, you know, be off-site for the full hour, they wouldn't just pick one session and then have to come back for a second session. So that's kind of what FAST will look like. And again, kind of academy and FAST are structures that we have in place to support the personalized learning. And again, kind of the, the tracking of the students would come through the EPAS system. Um, and then also kind of that leads, you know, kinda to some of our flexible learning areas that we have set up this year. Um, right now, students have ten areas that they could choose to go. Um, and I, in your packet, we did list, or we did include for you, um, the names of all those spaces and the purpose of the spaces. And the purpose matches back to the vocabulary. So again, seven of the ten spaces that we have are either a group flex or a personal flex. Um, and our students, I, I worked with all of our juniors and seniors last week and then Mr. Tradeau and I will be meeting with our students during FAST this Thursday to do additional training with them. Um, but really kind of talking to the kids that if you're in a personal flex area, this is a quiet work area and you need to respect that. If you're in a group flex, then you should expect that there's gonna be collaboration happening within that area. And then the other three areas that we have, we do have space for a help center, which we would like to eventually grow. Um, we're having a hard time right now getting our peer tutors, um, or kids to sign up to be peer tutors during the day. Um, but hopefully as students understand the structure, get more familiar with this, we'll see that grow. And then that would be a space manned by, um, students as peer tutors. Um, the creation station is another area and then we also will have a student lounge. Um, the juniors and seniors I met with last week, they created norms for those areas and I included those, um, within your packet too. Um, and just to explain too, if you're wondering why did Mrs. Niss put be respectful, be respectful, be respectful three times? It's because I basically took all seven hours, um, what they put for norms and I put them and I tried to categorize them and I just put on there everything that was said throughout the day. So three different hours said exactly to be respectful. And I thought the students did an excellent job with the norms, um, and really, they really did a nice job with that. So, um, so that's kind of our flexible learning areas. Um, and again, they'll sign up for those areas through the EPAS system. And there is a maximum number of students that can be in each area and we can see it go down and, you know, like as students are signing up, we see those numbers changing. So they can see if an area is full, then they cannot sign into that area, they would have to choose another flexible area. Um, so that kind of leads us into the study hall structure, so we're gonna move on to that and then we'll kinda have time at the end for questions.
Alright, so another one of the structures that are in place to support a more personalized learning environment is how we're, uh, doing our study halls this year. And I'm gonna speak on behalf of the seventh and eighth grade structure and then Kim will talk about our senior high, um, levels. But currently, the study hall structure for students in grades seven and eight will continue to work to promote that, really that true student ownership and hopefully to develop some of that mindset in grade seven and eight, so by the time they get to their credit-bearing years, they're really truly, um, ready to build that strong, um, high school transcript. Um, and during that time, students will be coached and guided in recognizing their learning needs, where they're at in their learning and then what they need to do to identify. And then they too, during that study hall time, which for our seventh and eighth graders, those that have it is during their fifth hour, um, right in the middle of the day, where they will also have the opportunity to use the EPAS system to identify where they're gonna spend that forty-seven minutes and with which teacher to get the help that they need. Um, and then as students are, are learning that and, and clearly identifying what they need, our teachers will be working with them to make sure they are appropriately identifying where they need to be during that time, um, and getting the, the correct support. Um, during our first two days of school, we directed all of our students, um, during this time into the Performing Arts Center and our, our teachers have done a wonderful job of collaborating and really working together to, in the infancies of this, while we've been getting the EPAS system rolled out, um, they've exercised great flex, flexibility, great collaboration to make sure the students, even in the first few days, are getting what they need and, and getting some support, uh, right away. Um, and then during that time, we, we really went over the expectations of what that time would look like for the students, um, what some of their responsibilities were and then how we will support them, um, as a school. So that's, that's the seventh and eighth grade shift where in the past, we really isolated kids, like you will see one teacher every single day for an entire semester. So now they will have a little more voice and choice in determining what they need in their learning to truly help develop that ownership of where they're at.
Yeah, and the eleventh and twelfth grade, I kinda was mentioning them, our eleventh and twelfth graders this year for study hall, we did not schedule them assigned to a teacher at all. So their study hall is their hour that they would be assigned to a teacher is they are, really have to check into a flexible learning area. And so we're looking at this as kind of the bridge, you know, as a school system, we so tightly schedule kids. We tell them where they're gonna be, who they're gonna report to. And so for our juniors and seniors, we wanted this to be a bridge between high school and when they do go off into the post-secondary or workforce, that they're, they're managing their time and they're determining what they need at that moment. Um, I thought it was interesting in the norms though, they, you know, they always say when you have students do the norms, they're gonna be tougher on themselves than you would be. And, you know, I kinda saw that come true, you know, 'cause they were saying you shouldn't be able to use the student lounge if you're behind on your work. You know, you have to get your work done to be able to use the student lounge. Um, and so, so our juniors and seniors for their study hall will report to a flexible learning area. Um, one, how we're starting off the year, we just asked them that once you sign into a location, that you remain in that location. Um, and then I plan on meeting with them one, at least once a quarter to get feedback from them, how's it going? Do we have enough spaces, are we honoring the norms? Um, and then, you know, I, that might be an area that we would change, you know, how we, how we practice that from their feedback. Um, and then our ninth and tenth graders, they still are assigned to a study hall teacher. Um, and they'll use the EPAS system to sign out, in the past, we've always had green passes. So we'll kind of continue, kinda the idea of the green pass, which has allowed them to, um, go to the media center, to use the EPAS system into the flexible areas. Um, but that will just be a, a smaller number of students, um, to do that. And then, um, as we close here, we just wanna let you know how we're supporting the teachers along the way, the students along the way, um, kind of our plans for working with our parents. Um, and you know, how are we gonna continue to grow and learn, um, in personalized learning? And one of the support systems we have is we, it's called Faculty Focus. Um, and we have set up to encourage learning, learning and growth, um, or I'm sorry, we meet once a mi, once a week for thirty minutes and we focus, the focus of this time is on the implementation of personalized learning. Um, in the packet that we did provide you, we included the first two articles that we shared with staff. Uh, we did an activity last Friday where we, Mr. Tradeau and I kinda did a summative, or a formative assessment ourselves with our staff just to find out what do they believe at this moment, what personalizedly, personalized learning is and what it is not. And so we kinda did, uh, a formative assessment with that, we collected that feedback from our staff and then we provided them with two articles that we included for you as well. So Faculty Focus is really kind of the avenue that we're gonna use with our staff. Um, and also in October, the district SDCC is bringing in a, a speaker, um, for on Train Ugly and there'll be a parent session at night also. And that's really about mindset. And mindset is huge in this process as well, so that will all kind of align with that as, that support too.
Another thing to, uh, continue to communicate and collaborate with our parents is our Parent Advisory Council, uh, this year will be in its third year of collaboration. Um, we've had some great conversations come from that the last couple of school years. Um, this group meets on a monthly basis to communicate, provide feedback, um, and to learn about different happenings that are going on, uh, throughout our school. Um, all parents are welcome to attend these meetings as we continually work to enhance the learning experience for our students and we're looking forward to our very first Parent Advisory Council meeting of the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen school year, which will be coming up on Monday, September eighteenth at five thirty PM in the Junior Senior High School Media Center. So again, all parents are, are welcome to attend that, um, and to, for us to continue to collaborate in regard to what's happening in our school system to make it the, the best that we can be for our students. So with that, that's, that's kinda the, the state of the junior, senior high school, um, six days into the school year. So if you have any questions, we'd be happy to entertain those at this time.
Questions? You guys have been busy.
That's an understatement. And you know, with, uh, with all the different contexts that, that we have, our community should know how blessed we are. The work that goes into making sure that the best we can do is the least that we should do, it's, shouldn't be understated. Not perfect and this'll have bumps, but i- it should be applauded. The work, the work is overwhelming, but it's so worth it.
Yeah, absolutely, and I would just like to highlight that, you know, in the infancies of this school year, our, the mindset of our teachers and support staff has just been unbelievable as we, as we are learning together and growing together and it's been an extremely humbling experience just to, to work with our staff and to see some of their excitement and the learning that, that they're embarking on and, and throughout this process. That's been, um, an extremely enjoyable start to the school year and we just hope to continue to build on that momentum throughout.
And Kim, while, while you guys are at the podium, uh, PSAT is coming up. I just wanted to put in a plug for PSAT, uh, and make sure that parents and kids are aware of it and, and what the significance of the test is.
Right, and you know, and I wished I had the date, we talked to Mr. Gertis today, October, it's in October, October eleventh? Yeah, so it's October eleventh and they'll be getting into the classrooms to really talk to the kids about it and we'll be putting information in our parent update that we send out to the families. Um, but we do encourage and, and kind of the change that was done today is that the school district, I hope this is okay, maybe.
Yes.
Okay. That the school district will be funding that assessment for our students. Um, and so, and we'll do an announcement at the school. We had, we've had almost thirty kids sign up right now, but we did order more tests today to let students know that. But we'll definitely get some detailed information into our parent update for our parents.
That is Wednesday, the eleventh.
And it's intended for?
Juniors.
Juniors, yeah, juniors, yep, yep.
And so, and they do need to come to the office and register?
Yes, yep, yep, they do need to come, they're keeping a list in the office and, um, and again, we'll announce that and I, and I'm trying to think, Scott will get into the classrooms to, you know, talk directly with the juniors.
What's the registration deadline?
You know, I don't know if there is a deadline, to be honest with you. Um, it's just, they, you know, just need, we just need to have enough tests. So I don't know how long it takes to get the test, that would be, you know, and I just met with the counselors today and, um, we didn't really, you know, I know we had talked to Scott earlier, um, Mr. Brown and, or the entire cabinet did, so.
So students should come in soon to.
Yes, yeah, right, right.
And then the other point, the, the significance of the test, what, how is it used?
How is it used? You know, very much like, I mean, for me, I, I'm gonna be honest, I, I really rely on the counselors here to relay this information to our students. When I think of the P A, P S A T, I equate it very much to the ACT in terms of college entrance. But the P S A T, um, can also qualify you for like a National Merit Scholarship. Um, and so that, to me, is the difference there, but more for kinda that college, kinda that college testing is how I would compare the two of them.
Yeah, and, and I believe the, the pre-ACT as well as the pre-SAT are a good prep for the, you know, the, both the SAT and the ACT there.
Yeah.
I think there's a, a little bit, a little bit more time.
Yeah.
A few, somewhat fewer questions, so it's a little bit, uh.
Yep.
More manageable.
Yeah, I was actually in Mrs. Johnson's classroom this week and she was actually, um, she has a Moodle, she created, she has her learning management system, Moodle, and she actually has, um, some information on there, actually quite a bit of information on there for our juniors for both ACT prep and P S A T prep, um, that they can go, free resources for them to practice and so she was going over that, all of that with them and, um, so I was, just happened to be in there when she was kinda showing. happened to be in there when she was kind of showing them where that was, and, you know, and again, the expectation is, you don't, we're not doing this for a class, but I wanted to provide you with this information so you can prepare for these tests coming up.
Very good.
Yeah.
And what's the date that they're going to mention publicly, folks that qualify for the National Merit Scholarship?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
We're embargoed until tomorrow.
There is some information, but no one can talk about it tonight.
No, it's embargoed, yeah.
So listen for tomorrow's news.
Got some great news, yeah, very exciting news.
I'm sure you'll be contacting the radio station and the Fairmont Sentinel to let them know if we have anybody that qualifies.
We do have some great news coming tomorrow, some really, 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 really great news, yeah.
Very good.
Oh, and one last thing, I just want to let the board know too, that we are, we're starting a writing center at the high school, junior-senior high school, it will begin the first Wednesday in October, it will be, we'll begin to have it open from 3:30 to 4:30. Our new EL teacher, Mrs. Hofstrom, who, she also teaches composition up at Mankato State University, she's going to be the advisor for the writing center, and she would like to include peer tutors within the writing center as well, so on September 20th, next Wednesday, we're going to see, where she's going to try to, we're going to send an announcement out for students who would want to help in the writing center to meet with her so she can get some additional information out. She's creating a flyer to give to all of the teachers so that they can let their students know, and she really sees it as, you know, if you want her just to review, review the work, she could review your work, if you, you know, to help learn to build the writing skills, she could see that, and she also sees it just as a place that if you enjoy writing, to come in and, you know, put your thoughts on paper during that time, so kind of like a writing club as well. So we're really excited to have that starting, we've wanted that for the last couple of years, and we were very happy with the hire of Mrs. Hofstrom.
The students that are in athletics, that's kind of a bad time.
Right.
Would there be some opportunity for them to at least turn in a paper for review?
Absolutely, oh absolutely, yeah. And the other thing we were talking about too, is like through the, during the fast time, to somehow maybe have that as always an option as well, yeah, to accommodate our kids in sports. On Wednesday, it'll work for our junior high, but not our senior high.
Okay.
Yeah, so that was just another thing I wanted to update you on.
Okay, exciting.
All right, thank you.
I just, I just had one comment before we finish, if we could. I really appreciate that you took input from the students, especially when it came to going around, picking out what areas it was, what, what they were named, as much input and as much involvement as we can have from the student leaders, that's going to dictate, I think, how successful and how quickly we're going to be able to refine this, to make it run as smooth as possible. So we need, I know as a board, I think we need to keep our ears open to students and parents, so we know what's working, and, you know, there'll be things, I'm sure, that'll have to, that'll come up, so that will have to be addressed. But I'm really glad that you took time to, to get the students involved in that part of it, and I hope that we, we keep that up.
Yeah, thanks Dan, I forgot to mention that, that it was actually our student council that named all of the spaces, so as you take a look at the spaces, because all the spaces need a name, so when they sign into ePass, we all know what that area of the, the school means, and our student council did that, and then they, also the student councils designed the student lounge, so they took that all on themselves, they've picked the fabrics, and I just told them, I might have helped a little bit with that, that's been fun. But you know, we have the orange countertops in that room, so I said, you got to work with the orange countertops, and they did a, I mean, it was amazing, I think, no, I didn't include the drawing in your packet, but the work that the students did and what they turned in was amazing, just amazing work from them. So yeah, thank you Dan, it was our student council, and we will absolutely continue to work with all entities.
And Kim, I just briefly talked to Sue today about the proposal you showed me in your room, would you work with her in my absence?
Yeah, yep, we're going to get a quote tomorrow, and then I was going to work with Sue.
Right, we, we set aside the dollars for that.
Oh, good, thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, very nice of that, holy cow.
Okay, superintendent, your turn.
Okay, here we go. First of all, the pink sheet, school calendar, I'm just going to highlight a couple of things. Thursday, September 21, there is an operations committee meeting that's scheduled, and Dell, you're listed, but it really should be Dan, so if you want to make that change, and Dan, Danielle, and Nicole, and Judy will be working with the three of you to coordinate some time that we, that you folks can meet. You'll be looking at the budget, tax levy, I'm sorry, the tax levy, the proposed tax levy that will be coming up in December to be finalized, but you'll be looking at that. And, yeah, the LED lighting proposals will be in, the request for proposal for the LED lighting replacement, so there's a number of things on that agenda, it's kind of an important meeting to go to. That's really the main one I wanted to highlight on that one. And ACT scores, the board members, you have in your packet, a two-page sheet of the ACT scores for the last five years, and you can kind of see how our high school seniors did, kind of compared, you can compare them with other classes in the last five years, and also you can compare them with the state average. And, you know, we are encouraging all of our kids to take the ACT, so that's why, last year we had that small senior class of 102 students, previous classes were a little larger. But if you have any questions on that, feel free to contact the principals or contact the counselors on that. And then an enrollment report, which is really good news, these are numbers, we always kind of wait for the second week of school to kind of take a snapshot of where we are with enrollment. The first report that goes to the state that's official is October 1, and we still have students coming and going, but right now at the, at the elementary school, we ended last year with 874 students at the elementary school, and we're starting this year with 868. So we're down six students at the elementary, and the main class that we're down right now is kindergarten, and we kind of expected that, we knew that was going to be a lower class, you know, there's only so many five-year-olds, okay, there's only so many four-year-olds, and as we were tracking the census data, we knew that this incoming kindergarten class would be a little smaller. Last year we had 121, this year we have 106. At the high school level though, last year we ended the year with 787 students. Principals, do you know where we are now? Eight, well, 841 is the number that we're looking at, so the high school looks like you're up about 54 students, so that's a net gain of the district of 48. And what's really special about that, that's a really important piece of data for the community to know, because almost all the schools in the southern and central part of the state are down in enrollment, we're one of the very, very few districts that's actually up, and by being up 48 students, that's really significant. Meeting with the counselors the last few days, the counselors have, they've enrolled 35 new students that have actually transferred in from, mostly from other states that have come in, and I shared those with you last Friday, but the number of states that the new students are coming from is really pretty interesting. And of course, we have some foreign exchange students, then we have some students from the surrounding communities. We really picked up a lot of juniors this year, our junior class now has 150, in fact, of all the grade levels that we have, our junior class has the, has the highest, 150. So we have 142 seniors, 150 juniors. That ninth grade class, I just want to point out once again, since we just passed 9/11 yesterday, but we have 118, that's one of our smaller grade levels, that, those were the group of kids that were born the year after 9/11, and nationwide, that's a smaller group of kids. A lot of families decided maybe to wait a year before they thought about bringing more children into the world, but, so that class size is smaller, as it is mainly throughout the United States. Any questions about enrollment or ACT scores or calendar?
Just a follow-up, I was out on a walk with my wife for this weekend and ran into a gentleman, and he informed me he was new to town, and he had, he came with six kids, so I thanked him.
No kidding?
And I told him what a great community we had, and what a great school system we had, and what a great school board.
Yes.
And a great superintendent.
And administration and...
Make sure you hit them off.
Business manager in the music department and fine arts department, great fine arts department. Are they coming to our school?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, mixed, mixed, I mean, you know, some in the junior high school and some at St. John Beanie.
Oh, good.
But that's the importance though, we need to, you know, we've got these numbers now, now we need to maintain and get these kids involved and get them encouraged and excited about school. I mean, those juniors, seniors, exactly, I mean, the great things that we're doing, let's share that and let's let them all know that it really is a wonderful place to have an education.
Yep.
And the gentleman explained to me that, you know, where he had come from, the public schools were not strong, and so for their younger kids, they decided to choose a different option, but, you know, I encouraged him to seriously consider, you know, the public schools, because I've had great luck with, with my kids.
But?
And one thing, one additional thing about the, about the ACT, I learned from my daughter that, that Cindy Johnson is, has, is now doing a ACT review on, I think on a weekly basis, grammar review, which, which is, which is very important, you know, on the ACT, and so hopefully it'll spur the math department to do something similar, just a thought.
The other thing I mentioned, you touched on that too, with the enrollment, you should have a sheet like this, which shows the class sizes at the elementary, that's always an issue that a lot of parents want to know, you know, how many students are in each class and how many teachers, and if you look at the kindergarten sections, the kindergarten sections are 22 or 23. Remember Jenny Daniel again this year, for the second year in a row, is doing that pilot program where they've hand-selected 16 students, have a smaller class size so they can get those kids ready for first grade. And the proof was in the pudding, last year, the students that were in that smaller class last year made significant gains, and they were, almost all of them were ready to go to first grade this year, and so we're doing that pilot project again this year, and so that's really good. And then first grade numbers are pretty low, second grade numbers average 18 and a half to 19 students, and then, but K1 and 2 are really trying to keep those numbers low, give those kids a great start.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks Joe.
Thank you.
Financial business, do we have a donation to add?
Yes, in Appendix A in your packet is an example of the community support we have here. I introduce the following resolution and move for its adoption. Whereas the Fairmont Soccer Association donated girls and boys varsity home and away jerseys, totaling $6,664.23, and also donated socks for all soccer players at the cost of $1,367.18. Be it resolved by the Fairmont Area School Board to gratefully accept the gift.
I'll second it.
Give a motion in a second, there'll be a roll call. Dell?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And Nicole?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Motion passes. Financial reports and bills, Sue.
Tonight, on the agenda, we have the approval of the August 2017 Treasurers Report and Single Checks, and the wire transfers from August 18th through September 7th, and the payment of the September 12th bills. So beginning with the transfers and wires for that time period, there are several listed there, about the fourth one down, you can see we received money for our summer feeding program, $16,789. The next one is our net payroll amount for August, the following to our payroll taxes and deductions. And then the next one down on August 30th was our ideas payment from the state of Minnesota, we received money from the state of Minnesota, and the 15th and the 30th of the month, and that's called our ideas payment, and those are our metered payments, and that was $1,036,000. And then on the bottom, you can see our payroll dispersments for the month of August was $970,000. Any questions? And then, just tonight in your packet that Judy handed you out, you had the August 2017 Treasurers Report, so just this list as of the end of August, the different funds, along the left and in the middle, the different accounts within each fund, and then the end of the month cash balance. And then you should have two check registers, one is very short, that's our single checks. I'm here in August, we ended up with three single checks, the last one is made out to the postmaster, and we needed to have postage for our food service mailing, that didn't correspond time-wise with a board meeting. And moving to the payments dated today, September 12th, I just have three to bring to your attention. Check number 60,178, made out to CDI computer dealers, this is for LED projectors for in the classrooms, and our IT guys worked on a four-year project to do replacement upgrades of LED projectors in the classrooms. Check number 60,184, made out to the Fairmont Cardinal Booster Club, this was the Fairmont School's share of a new gymnastics floor, so the share of the gymnastics floor was divided out between Mark County West Schools, Fairmont Schools, and the booster clubs of both schools, because that's a cooperative athletic program. And then check number 60,217, made out to Reality Works, this is for the purchase of those two virtual welders that you saw the demonstration of tonight. That's all I had for you, and Julie and I did review everything prior to the board meeting. Any questions?
If there are no questions, I then would move to approve the August 2017 Treasurers Report, the Single Checks Wire Transfers for August 18th, 2017, to September 7th, 2017, and payment of the September 12th, 2017 bills.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all is in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you Sue. No old business, new business, teacher contract, Dell?
If you'll look in your packet, Appendix B, we, we've negotiated a contract, it went smooth, and I think everybody was kind of focused on the same things. We have seven language items that we addressed, and then financially, we had six items, the main being for the year 2017-2018, a 3.287% increase, and for the years 2018-2019, a 3.104% increase. There was an increase to the, to the district's health insurance contribution, as well as the 403B contributions, and additionally, the fine arts and the athletic increase of 5% through 2019. So there were some other things there, but the negotiations went well, and I would move that we approve the teacher's contract for the 2017-2018 and 2018-2019 school years.
I'll second it.
Motion in a second, can you discuss any questions? All is in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Nicole, teacher seniority list?
Yes, every year we approve as a board the teacher seniority list for certified staff, and we also approve the Fairmont Area School Certified Staff Non-Tenured List. The teachers have had the opportunity to review this and have, and to notify Judy of any changes, and because those changes have been noted, I move to approve the Fairmont Area School Certified Staff Seniority List for the 2017-18 school year and the non-tenured list for 2017-18 school year.
I'll second it.
We have a motion in a second, all is in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Personnel, Dell, medical leave?
Well, unfortunately, but necessarily, I would move that we approve the medical leave request for Joseph Brown effective September 13th through October 27th, 2017, per medical recommendations.
I'll second that.
Motion in a second, all is in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Can I vote no?
No, unfortunately. Uh, committee, uh, board committee report, Southern Plains Board, Julie?
Yes, the Southern Plains Educational Cooperative Board met Monday, August 28th. All of our members were up, were there except for there was, well, I guess two of them were missing that night. One thing that I wanted to bring to your attention tonight is Kristin Teague and Shelley Kramer came and spoke about the accessible playground, they're on that committee funding that. I got some, I'll pass them around, look at those. There also is some information here that they're using for, just for going out and meeting people in the community and that, and I would like to have them come to one of our school boards and present as well, they did a very nice job. It's just really neat to have an inclusive playground for all students, you know, and I think one of the saddest ones, where, where is the picture in here, and I'll show this one to you, this wasn't even, oh, where's the one? Anyway, there's a picture that, they had a photographer come in and take a picture, here's the one, the very beginning here, take a minute to look at that, but, and this wasn't posed at all, but this is how some students who are not able to use our playground equipment that we currently have at any of our parks here, and it's just wrenches at your heart to see... And it just wrenches at your heart to see this child not being able to participate. And this is the goal of this, is to have all children be able to use the playground, whether they have any handicaps or just normal children. You know, we all have some kind of disability maybe or something, but it's something for all children of our community. I asked the question as to where our closest one is. Mankato is in the process of building something. Otherwise, they thought probably Minneapolis, and I have been on that playground with my grandchildren, and it's a wonderful place to be. And I know maybe Rochester, they thought maybe there was something, and maybe Sioux Falls, but otherwise, that's it. And what a wonderful place to, you know, another promotional thing for even Fairmont to have, that we have this playground for all students. And so they have gone to the city council, and I believe there's on the budget, was approved last night, or at least it was mentioned, that they'll have some funding for this next year. It'll take several years to come up with the funding, but it's just something that, you know, we can use as, even as ourselves, we can give money to this project. So just a wonderful worthwhile cause for all students, and just another way that we can make our community a great place to be. So, but anyway, I'd like to have them come and present because I know they do a much better job than what I just did. So, anyway, I'll go through the rest of our minutes from that. Of course, always have resignations, terminations, retirements, leave of absence, add some hirings, you know, back to school now, we have hirings just like we all do. Had some policies that we reviewed, prices for meals, did some staff sharing agreements, memorandum of understanding with the Southern Plains Educational Support Personnel, agreement for services for Minnesota Girls Academy, agreement for services for pediatric therapy. I mean, just a lot of stuff that cooperative that we need to do as the Southern Plains Cooperative. Reviewed this handbook, and then like we do all the time, as we set our, every, you know, every year we have a fiscal list that we have to approve for everything, and that went through as well. So that's all there really was. Next meeting will be Monday, September 25th at 5:00. And that's why I apologize I didn't make it to the staff picnic. Happened to be the same, same night. And so because I was the representative for this, I had to, thanks to Judy reminding me, I had to attend this, so.
I think we still have some coleslaw.
Do you?
And some beans.
Okay, I think that's the end of the agenda. Entertain a motion for adjournment.
So move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. 6:07, okay.